We'll call the panel meeting to order on Thursday, July 10th, 2014 at 7:00 PM. For the agenda approval, approval of the minutes of 6:1914 and the special on 6:2614. Warrants, mail, whole business, Bruce Lierman has the request for a letter of support for the Western New England Greenway, the bicycle route. Delinquent tax collector is going to bring us up to deal with a tax sale redemption issue, open meeting law to designate posting locations for public notice and agendas, and under new business meeting scheduled for the week of July 14th, and personnel, employee evaluation pay raises. Motion to accept?
I'll make that motion, having that we speak to these in the executive.
Yeah, yeah. Is he get a second?
Second.
Okay, when they come up, just.
Okay.
Okay, approval of the minutes of 6:1914.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Got one of them, I wasn't here. I'll go aye. 6:19. Okay, approval of 6:26.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I abstain. Rich, you abstain. Okay, warrants. Bear with me, there's a few of them. Payroll ending 6:2714 in the amount of $8,435.66. Payroll warrant ending 7:0314 in the amount of $5,873.08. Payroll ending 7:11 in the amount of $6,171.34. Counts payable ending 6:272014.
You don't, you won't sign them.
In $21,187.40. Counts payable invoice ending 7:0314 in the amount of $29,805.03, of which $17,000 was the county tax. Counts payable invoice ending 7:1114 in the amount of $21,361.10, of which there was diesel fuel paid in excess of $6,000. It was three different billings, one's $2,708 and so forth. That's where your large money was with that. What's your pleasure?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I say aye all but number three, because my pay thing was in there.
Payroll ending 7:06.
Ending 7:11. So one I abstain from. Vermont Select Board, this is to do with the education tax. I guess somebody wants to get in. Might in and have a seat?
Thank you.
Okay, basically, this is for the physical year 2015 educational tax rates, the non-residential tax rate to be assessed for the town of Pownell. Again, this is the educational tax rate that comes from down, from upstate. It's not our setting of a tax rate for the town yet. It will be 1.4442 for non-residential. That's an increase of .0595, just about six cents. Homestead tax rate is 1.3771, which is an increase of .0628, just a little over six cents. And again, these, this is not the town tax rate yet, because we still have to add in the town setting for the road and the general fund, and whatever schools will be adding. Okay? Okay, did it have a common level of phrase on it?
No.
No, it did not. This is from the Agency of Natural Resources, Vermont Material Management Plan for formerly Solid Waste Management Plan. This is to do with some of the statute of universal recycling laws that's going in place, and what they're instituting. And the VCRC also has set down their thing to do with swipe, which again is their plan for managing the waste up. I'm going to let, I'm just going to go through these quickly, because I'll let Hap when he comes talk more about this stuff, seeing, I noticed these, some of these things are addressed to him, too, so. But basically, it's talking about the communities that are joined together within the district. Let's see if it tells how many.
It should be nine.
A total of nine are in joined, and they list out what each is combined with and what they're doing. And there's more work being done on it, and they have a timeframe of when they're hoping to get the project done, so they can tell us what it means for Pownell. Bennington County Regional Commission, Thursday, July 17th, is having a meeting at the Pownell Elementary School, starting at 5:30 PM. The discussion will be about the changing local response, changes in conditions to do with landscape, healthcare, changing effects on residents. So they'll be talking about the healthcare from the state, and then they'll also be talking about the Bennington County Regional Plan, and how it has impact on the area in the whole. The regional plan usually is met by the individual towns. They look at, basically, regional plan is approved by the VCRC, and basically, when the town does a plan, they also review ours, and they see if it has anything that's way out of whack from what the region really was looking at, and then they'll come back and do a little work more if they need to. So we should understand what theirs is, just so we know more about what's going on in the region. Again, that's next Thursday, July 17th, and I would urge the board to attend this, simply because of both things, really. One is, we need to know more about the individual healthcare and the healthcare program in the state, and what's going on. We know that that's been costing more and more every year, and we need to find out what it means. But I think the regional plan, only because I was wearing this packet, we're going to address where the town is moving forward on the town plan.
What time was that, Nelson?
It starts at 5:30.
Okay, right.
And it goes all the way through to 7:30. So I would say you can either schedule your meeting for later here, or not have a meeting that night, and go to that, and then go away, and think about what that is, and be ready to discuss some of those issues, because we will be confronted with. It's up to the board. But that's, is that next week? So think about that, and we'll address that again as the meeting goes on, Thursday, the 17th. Okay, this is to do with emergency management, home security, local emergency operations plan. They're asking for our input and our plan, and this has been given to our emergency coordinator to work on. We have a notice from our representative to do with Bill Bots that are due with the state treasury office, federal funds available for reimbursement to do with secure rural school acts for search and rescue and other emergency services. It's got to do with flooding and some other things to do with the act. Is this something that the fire department should have copies of, or?
I have, I have a copy.
You have a copy already?
I don't think it pertains, being that it's directly, it's immediate after the storms.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And we're going to come back to that, because that one we're going to have to talk a little more about. Okay, Tax Administration's Delinquent Tax Report. Okay, this is as of 7/1/2014. The total we have is $232,995.27, and that includes penalties and interest. It's $192,363.64 without the penalties and interest, for what delinquent taxes are. And this is our delinquent sewer tax. And the total there, again, this is 7/1, is $58,239.27 with penalties and interest. And it's, as different, for the first quarter, it was $6,889.91. The second payment was $8,762.30 in arrears. Third payment was $13,452.47. And the fourth payment was $22,324.67, which added up to the $58,239.27 with interest and penalties added to it. We have a notice of an upcoming meeting by the Town Hall Committee, that they've been invited up to Wilmington, to the offices of the Line Sync Architectural Firm, that's doing the work on the design work for the Town Hall. And they want to talk a little about discussion on building costs and materials and et cetera to do with that building. And again, that's on Monday, July 14th, starting at 10:00 AM in Wilmington. Pownell Board of Selectmen, this is to do with, the person is at, it's our neighbor who is asking for us to take care of the tree that has split, and part of it fell on his house. And the other thing is, he's looking for reimbursement for all the expenses so far that he has paid. What's your pleasure, guys?
What's your pleasure?
Well, he's saying the tree is on our property, and we don't, nobody's gone out and found the pin yet. So we might want to wait until we find out before we have a discussion.
What does he want money for?
He wants money for the deductible, as well as $231 towards the new washing machine that he's paid for, for a total of $481. But he also wants us to pay to take down the tree that's out there, that's split and gone. So he has gone to our, I don't know if he, he's gone to our insurance company?
Yes, apparently, he just went there.
Okay, so, you know.
I think we need to find out where the pin is.
I think we ought to go to it. Sorry.
Yeah, we should ask our insurance company what he thinks of it, for sure.
My insurance company, I go to my.
Yeah, I would like to know whether the trees are, well, first, I'd like to know if the tree's on our land.
Well, the insurance company will find that out. Because, I mean, we work with them, I mean, we're.
Well, I know we have a metal detector that the sewer plant uses, to find pins and stuff. If we could ask them to.
Do you know if anybody, or anybody here know of anybody that would try to find that pin?
I think we can have him come up, we can have him come up, wave his wand around, he'll find the pin.
Okay, good, then let's, let's do that.
I think we should do that.
But I think we should get a hold of our own insurance.
Yeah, and we should talk to our insurance company.
That will grow into maybe more than we.
Now, now, the real question comes.
If that tree is on our property, I would highly suggest that we get, we get the rest of it taken down, because it's, it surely is going to rot and going to fall down anyway.
And now that we know that it's.
That part of it.
Yeah. Well, that part, we, the insurance ain't going to, we doing that.
Yeah.
Right, you're right.
Yeah, if it's on us.
So let's find out if it's on ours, and then, so what I'm recommending is that we table it, until then, then we'll have a discussion about taking the tree down, if it is on ours, and whatever else we want to do. Now, the real question comes, when was the claim put in, and to what insurance company? Because you have two now, right? You only have one insurance company now, but when this tree fell, we had a different insurance company.
Yeah, I read that letter, he put it into his.
Okay, so he put it into his insurance company.
But, we don't have that, so.
Okay.
That's, that's the way I read the letter.
Yep, okay.
Now, I mean, we got to do the simple thing first, we got to find out where the tree is, and then we'll proceed from there. But I think we ought to get Carl or Darcy up here with that. They can find that in five minutes, if there's a pin there.
Yes, sir.
What are we going to do, if there's no pin, what are we going to have it do with surveyed?
Well.
We'll have to find out.
When I saw the pin years ago, I thought it was in front of the tree, but the tree's grown a little, so.
You been around that long?
Ray seems, yeah.
I was, I, I remember planting that.
You planted it.
You probably did.
Okay.
He is a little older than I am. We did plant a tree out there.
Yeah, I know we did.
But basically, Ray thought the pin was more to the other side of the tree, not in the middle tree, so I'd like to find where it is.
Well, okay, but I, I think Ronnie's right, I mean, as far as the tree goes, I have no problem taking, I get a little nervous about playing around with damages.
Yeah, well, we'll let our insurance company decide that.
Okay, I worry about that part.
Well, let the insurance company decide that. Now, based on the fact that.
We can determine whether to take the tree down or not, right? I mean, we can all.
We'll do that, we'll do that once we know who owns it.
Tree's broken open, so if it's on us, it should come down.
Yeah, that's right.
Per se, because it's only going to come down later anyway, if it's on us. That's what we got to find out for.
Okay, I'm going to stop the discussion, because we don't know who it is. We'll find out when the pin's on it, then we'll discuss it.
Okay.
See where it is. Okay, moving on. Community flood, the PLCT news brochure, and now we have a request from our planning board to do with hiring a planner to help them with the town plan. They are looking for the board to approve the retention of Land Works as a consultant to the town PC. Let's see, commission invitation to BOs to attend the BC meeting on July 15th. So they're looking for us to attend their meeting, according to this?
Yes.
That's what it says.
We'll be asking the board to approve the retention of Land Works as a consultant to the town and the PC to update the town plan, and to seek from the board a commitment to fund anticipated consultant costs in excess of municipal planning grant. July 15th being next Tuesday. I will not be able to attend that, you guys can if you wish.
What time is that one?
Seven.
Seven o'clock.
Okay.
That's when they hold the meeting. And they did a cost estimate here, just so you guys will be prepared. Total expense to the town, assuming the maximum MPG is awarded, is $17,755. And I thought the previous board had approved some of that, because it was some money for them. So that's the mail. Again, just so you guys know, when you go to that on the 15th, okay, and it'll be their meeting, so you're attending their meeting. They, they'll chair it and manage it, you're guests, so. Bruce, you're up.
Keep interfering with the wires here. So three weeks ago, I was here, talked about the Western New England Greenway, and their efforts to get the route that the Greenway follows through Pownell designated as part of a US bicycle route, US bicycle route number seven. And, you know, I've, I've briefed you on the route, I have copies of the map, again, if you want to refresh yourselves on it, it would basically come up Burrington Road, then take Barber Pond Road, just to Middle Pownell Road, Middle Pownell to Maple Grove, to South Stream, and into Bennington. So it's on Route 7 from the Massachusetts line up to Burrington Road, and then, of course, the little pieces of seven between Burrington and Barber Pond. So I, and at that time, the discussion was that you'd wait for a period of public comment, and then review the proposal again. I do have copies of a draft lever, a letter, that of course, you're free to look at, and to revise as you think it might fit your purposes. Happy to answer any other questions you have about the project and what we're asking of you, if you, if there's anything else you'd like to ask me.
Well, let me make a comment first. We've had one person respond, that lives on Hidden Valley Road in Pownell, had heard about this bicycle route in New England, and they feel it would be, help Pownell by bringing bike tourists near, and as a town community, we should support it. And this person would be more than happy to speak to the Select Board if necessary. Did we get any other response in any direction?
That's it.
That's it. Okay, could you, yeah, we do a, allow a bike race or something to occur every year in town. Where's that run? Does that come down any of those roads?
It's east, east side of town.
Yeah, and it's not going to, not just the dragons, and it's not.
It's South Stream Road, Morgan, Middle Pownell Road, Barber's Pond Road.
So it is part of.
Maple Grove Road.
So it is part of what this is. So that occurs every year now with bikes that goes through there. I was just trying to see if, I just was seeing if it was coinciding with anything that that road's been used for in the past.
The, and certainly, I, you know, there's that competitive event, that, that's a very popular route for cyclists, because it does keep you off of both South Stream, avoids the hill on Barber Pond Road, and is relatively quiet roads that link you up to Bennington. So it's a popular route. I think for purposes like this, what you're more likely to see is onesies and twosies of bicycle tourists, who are going to be, you know, carrying 30 pounds of luggage on the bike, and going someplace on, between campsites generally. That's generally the way touring bicyclists operate. So I, it, it, there are no events exactly organized around the Western New England Greenway, it's just a line on a map that shows people some of the good bike routes through the state of Vermont and the other states that are involved.
Because there is a campground right off Barber's Pond Road, that I know it's frequented by the bicyclers, because I happen to live there.
Yep.
The only thing I would like to see is if, if we go ahead with this, is I'd like to just see some signage of, you know, warning motorists that bicyclers can or will be or could be, you know, on those paths. That would be my only concern, is to have some type of caution signage for that route.
Are you thinking that, just for my own interest, in terms of a share the road sign, or something that's more cautionary to?
Something that's more cautionary, because Barber's Pond Road, as you know, is not a, there's not a, it's not a straight line shot, and you know, you're dipping down, you're coming up, you're turning, and you're coming across, you know, and, and I'm not being negative about this, but sometimes they do not ride in line, it's side by side, or, you know, because even the, the local colleges use that for cross-country skiing training and bicycling, et cetera. But just so the motorists would be aware that they could encounter, just as you would, a deer crossing sign, or, or anything else.
One of the reasons I asked about that is, because I know the VTранs has the, you know, the share the road signage and other things related to that, I don't know what they might have in the way of, you know, cautions or advice.
I mean, share the road is a great idea also.
Okay.
For that subliminal.
The share the road, I'm pretty sure we could get some cooperation from the bike coordinator for.
That would be great.
I'll, I'll see what I can find out. And I'll see if they have any other kind of signage that they use around areas where they have heavy cycling.
And primarily, again, we're talking spring through fall.
Exactly.
You know, for the use of that, correct?
Right.
Bruce, you had a, you had a symbol with you last time you were here.
Yes, I did.
As in something that was going to mark, I don't know if you saw that or not.
No, I didn't.
That was going to be, they would provide those to be put on our signs.
Yeah, that's, that's a sample, this one would just say bike route 7 rather than 606.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, and these, again, the Western New England Greenway would supply, there'd be no cost to the town for those. We'd have to discuss what's the best way to, as far as the polls or supports are concerned, could we put them on existing signs, or whatever. Generally, that's what we like to do, because you can also indicate the direction if the route turns. So where they turn off Barber Pond onto Middle Pownell, there might be this along with an arrow.
Sure. I think it's a good thing. I do.
Okay. Let me see what it was that you were talking about, that you're looking for us to pass.
Right, that's the draft letter, I haven't, of course, filled any resolution numbers or.
I know how they cheat these guys.
That's, that's a value to the, to VTранs when they submit the documentation.
Basically, what the resolution would say, I'm going to read off this sample here. Resolution of the Town of Pownell stating its support for the development of the US Bicycle Route 7 is hereby resolved by the Town of Pownell, that the Town of Pownell hereby expresses its approval and support for the development of US Bicycle Route 7 according to the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials. And then they abbreviated it. Guidelines and request that the appropriate government officials take action to officially designate the route according as soon as possible, accordingly, be it further resolved by the Town of Pownell, that the Town of Pownell agrees to the posting of route signs when provided by the Western New England Greenway for said bicycle route, once said destination has been made. All resolutions and parts of resolutions, as far as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution, be and the same, are hereby rescinded. Resolution was introduced by, and supported by others in the organization applicable, the resolution declared adopted by following roll call vote, and we say yea in the absence. So basically, I guess what I would do is have Linda look at this and make up whatever our resolution number would be, fill in the blanks, and then the board could vote on this if they wish. That's my suggestion.
Do you have a timeline for this, or?
It'd probably be a year before, before we get the approval.
Okay.
And we'll be working on the.
One comment I'd like to make is, when we have the bicycle race, we have police.
Hold it.
When they have the bicycle race, they have police. Like our constable gets, you know, and everybody knows it's happening. So it's, it's, you know, and it's in the paper and everything else. This here is just at random, right?
Right.
Whenever somebody wants to ride by.
Yeah.
And see, I live on 346, which is like Barber's Pond Road.
Right.
Only it's, it's a lot heavier travel. But there was a trailer truck that went by my house Tuesday, and he had to get down about five miles an hour due to a line of bicycles. See? I mean, I, I feel bad for the guy trying to, you know, there's people out there trying to make a living.
Yeah.
And I feel kind of bad for them. So that's why I'm not, I mean, and especially, I mean, I could probably live with this thing, but I can't live with them riding side by side. I can't do that. So I'll vote nay, if that's, if that's the rule, if it's side by side, I'm a nayer. Well, you're not going to.
The truth of the matter is, or, I, you know, passing this resolution is not really going to affect bicyclist or motorist behavior. So I, I don't think, you know, I can't promise it'll be any better.
You talked, you talked earlier, though, that there was a statute in the state of Vermont that says that they're supposed to go single file?
It says they can ride side by side, but that they should single file if they're competing traffic. And I, I, I agree with you, that I'd like to see the laws more firmly enforced, it's better for.
I guess what I like to do is see that statute, so we know what it is, and we can give it to our constable.
What I wanted to bring up, I wanted, I think our constables should be, I mean, the drivers are always on time, so I mean.
I think we're getting way too deep into this. This is a, this is a simple thing of, come on, if I want to, if I have a bicycle in my garage, and I want to ride down Barber's Pond Road, it's my given right to do so, and I don't care if you're in a Mack truck or a pickup truck.
And I don't care if you do.
You know, well, I think we're.
You're a single rider.
No, the reason, no, wait a minute, no, the only reason I was, wanted to bring that up was, I just, if you don't have all of our people involved in it, then it's just another frickus. I mean, I could care less how many people ride bicycles.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm talking about the bicycle business. All I'm saying is, is if there is. All I'm saying is, is if there is something that needs to, I mean, people are concerned about this Barber's Pond, uh, section of road. Now, I don't care if you wanna come, come down through there, um, jogging or riding bicycles. I mean, it's, it's almost the same. It's almost the same. It is a bad, it is, uh, it's a road of what it is.
Yep.
Okay? So I'm speaking for safety reasons, not to, not to deny.
Yeah. Let me, let me, let me address it a different way, because I live on a road where the bicycle goes all the time. The joggers go all the time.
Mine do.
Probably, and I'm sure that, I was gonna say, I'm sure they go by the farm all the time. The, the bottom line is currently we have that use throughout our town because of, of our roads, what they are, and people wanna ride them. So, all we're doing here is actually designating this greenway, which is gonna end up in some book for some club or groups to look at, to see where there is a marked out trail through Vermont from one end to the other. Uh, that's really what this, this boils down to. What we're talking about as a problem isn't just a problem with this type of thing that we're talking about, it's a problem that we all have around town everywhere. Come around my corner down there and have two bikes come side by side. I don't know if Ronnie's ever come up, but I have.
But, uh, you wanna follow that a little bit farther? Uh, you're the one that brought it up.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, you brought it to light, is what I'm trying to catch to.
Right.
Not that, not that that's bad, I think that's alright.
Right.
But, you're the one that brought it to light for discussion.
Right.
Other words, there'd be no discussion. So, now, if you wanna take a real look at this, the only difference between someone that has always been riding, and when the town agrees, we just said it was okay before, we haven't said anything.
It's been okay without us saying okay.
That's what, you follow where I'm going? It's been okay, so go, do it.
That's why I say I think we're getting way too deep in this.
Well, I get, I get a little deep. I have no trouble with this resolution and having to fill it out and just have a line that says as long as they follow the statutes of the state.
That, that's good enough for me.
And that's all it's got, because then we're saying, we don't care if you do this as long as you find the statutes of the state.
Okay, sure, fine.
Alright?
Because that's really where it's all been boiled down to for the discussion.
So can we move on and have our administrative assistant fill this out?
Absolutely.
Add that line? Do you have any trouble with us adding that line?
I don't at all, I think that's good.
And then at that point at the, the next meeting?
Good.
You have, you can pass the resolution or deny it, whichever you choose.
I don't see any reason to deny, I think that's alright.
Any further discussion on it?
Yeah.
Don't go say those words.
Um, no, and you wanna just address one more thing? Uh, when we do agree to this, uh, we pound our own post.
Well, I don't know, maybe this, maybe this could be attached to it.
I don't care.
Three signs, existing three signs.
All I'm saying is, you just took on a job.
Yeah.
There's the difference.
Yeah.
No, I just want you to be sure that you understand, we took on another job.
Yeah.
Okay, it's alright if you wanna pay for it, but we took on another job.
Nope, okay.
Okay?
Yeah, yeah. And again, and again, I have no trouble with it being, say, that it's attached to the street signs. You know, because they're on every corner.
That's either there, we'll, we'll decide that. We're in control of the sign, so I'm...
Well, who puts the signs, I thought, my understanding is you supply the signs and we put them up?
We supply the signs.
They supply the sign.
Yep.
We put them up.
Yeah.
Okay, that's okay, we can do that.
Yeah.
They put up signs before in our town.
Yes, we have.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Linda can get in touch with you once we get to the point where we're passing the resolution, if you wish to know, or you can wait and she can notify you after we...
Do you have contact information?
I might come in and vote too.
Okay, Linda, could you notify him when we're gonna pass, when we're actually ready to vote on it?
And you have his contact, right?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna jump a little bit. Open meeting law, designate posting locations for the public, for where we post our notices. We currently post them here in the town office, Jimmy Winchester, and where's the other place that you post them?
Pownell Market.
In the Pownell Market. Do you wish to change any of that, or do you wish to make a motion if that's where they continue to be posted?
I'll make a motion, that's where they continue to be posted, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's just happened to be on the record because of the new statute. Okay. Uh, meeting, uh, meeting schedule for the week of July fourteenth, this is the one to do with the seventeenth at Thursday.
Wait a minute, are we in...
I'm jumping to new business. I'm gonna come back to the...
Okay.
Some of these things are gonna go in executive session.
Okay, okay.
I wanna get the things out of the way that's on the...
Okay.
Meeting of the week of July fourteenth, uh, you got the fifteenth, you got the planning board?
Yeah.
Meeting, and then, uh, on the seventeenth, uh, I had recommended that you go to the VCRC meeting. I don't know if the, the board feels the, both of them are what you wanna go to that week, and if you do, uh, you might not wanna have a regular meeting, because you're gonna be a couple meetings already. Would make a motion to do what they wish. Make a motion to go, attend those meetings, or...
I'd make a motion to attend them.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Uh, and you're not gonna have a meeting, you're canceling the meeting out on the seventeenth, the regular meeting you have here?
That sounds good.
Yes, okay. Board in agreement on that? Okay.
You agree, Ron?
Okay.
You gotta sit down.
Back to sleep.
Fine, Ron. Okay, delinquent tax collector. Where'd you go?
Right here.
Come in and tell, give us a little bit of spilling this, then we'll decide whether to go in the, the next session, or do we need to go in right away? Are you ready?
I can, either or, how we, how, what do you wanna do?
I just wanna know what we're, what we're talking about, and then we'll make a motion.
Okay, um, I have, um, a mobile home that I sold, um, that was, repurchased the Town of Pownell in a tax sale on October tenth of two thousand thirteen. It's in Verde Trailer Park. Um, I requested to be, um, meeting tonight, I have some people that would like to, I wanna use the right words here, they want to...
Negotiate?
Negotiate the rights of the tax sale, they'd like to purchase the tax sale from the Town of Pownell and become the people that bought it at tax sale, for whatever the town wishes to do that for. Um, and if, if the town is interested in, in doing that, I don't, otherwise, the town